Mayor, we're ready.
We're ready.
Okay, good evening, everyone. If everyone could take a seat, and there's plenty of room up front if you want to move forward. Usually, we don't get any takers when we say that. I don't know why that is. Anyway, welcome to the Council in Your Neighborhood here in the beautiful Spar Heights Community Center, and we will officially call the meeting to order now at 6:05 PM with a roll call.
Council members Asadrian.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Bronman.
Here. Thank you. And may we start with your report, please?
Yes. The agenda for the Tuesday, October 3, 2023 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on September 27, 2023 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. We have a number of items to discuss today, and do we have cards for people to speak? Do we have the cards in the back?
We do.
We're all set up with cards? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Kasakian?
May I ask the city attorney to give a brief explanation as to how this meeting differs from our regular council meetings?
Good idea.
In terms of housekeeping, so for our attendees who are taking their time to come out here and join us, thank you all for coming.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this meeting is a special meeting of the council, meaning the items for discussion are the items listed on the agenda, as well as, I believe, we did list a period of oral communication, so if members of the public want to speak on general matters, they can do so. But generally speaking, this is for presentations on the specific items on the agenda for, you know, for there to be a public comment on those agendas if members of the public wish to speak, and then for the council to address any issues. No action can be taken at tonight's meeting because this meeting is not being held in council chambers. So then that'll happen, answer any questions you may have.
That's good. Is that satisfactory? Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we will get right into it. We have four items, and Madam City Clerk, we have five? One, two, three, oh, we have five. Yes, Madam City Clerk, could you read the first item into the record for us?
Yes, the first item is pay-by-phone parking program.
Okay, so, Mr. Galanian, you want to kick it off?
Yes, and good evening, Mayor Bronman, members of the City Council, members of the public. Thank you for attending. This is our third Council in Your Neighborhood meeting where we take the show on the road and go to different neighborhoods this evening in Spar Heights, and I'm glad to see a decent-sized attendance. And as Mayor mentioned, we have five very interesting topics to cover, and the members of the public may submit cards regarding any of these topics or topics not on the agenda. Councils welcome to ask questions, provide comments, but as Mr. Garcia mentioned, there will be no action taken. We start off by pay-by-phone parking program, and Yazdan Imrani, our Director of Public Works, will make that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I have a short presentation about the progress of one of our applications that we've been implementing or working on implementing. It's the pay-by-phone application for making payments at the parking meters. So to give you a little bit of a background, our goal was to basically implement something that's low capital, low expense. We can have contactless payment. People didn't have to carry around a bunch of coins or even a credit card if they didn't want to. Had good customer support, and in addition, you could use other payment features such as Apple Pay or Google Pay. This particular application that we contracted with also can support 12 different languages. We've already talked to them about having it in, for example, Armenian, which is coming in 2024, and other features such as extending your parking session remotely and having a good customer support. So the rollout basically started in Montrose in April, and basically, we had a pilot program in the Montrose area for a few months. We wanted to make sure we get the kinks out of the system and solve any technical problems. And basically, we went live for the rest of the city just very recently. In fact, this past weekend, we have implemented throughout the rest of the city of Glendale.
And some typos on the slides, but that was 2022.
2022, yeah.
And then 2023, just so nobody's confused.
Thank you. So the pay-by-phone program for Montrose, we advertised it with the merchants. We talked to the Montrose Shopping Park Association. We provided information in English, Spanish, and Armenian on our website. We had the very extensive social media outreach. And from all accounts, basically, it's been very successful in the Montrose area. We've received positive feedback. The program usage, almost 4,000 last month, and we're averaging during the first four months, 1,500 new users each month. So it's basically an app that you download from the App Store, and you register, and you basically start using it. And that's my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, we'll go around the table here. Councilmember Kasakian?
Well, I don't have a question for staff, but I do have a question for some of the Shopping Park Association members. I know that we have one of our commissioners here, Mr. Odubegian, who also happens to be on the Shopping Park Association. I'd like to ask him what his impressions and other merchants' impressions are as to how it's been received, and I know you talk to a lot of the customers as well. So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. Odubegian.
Of course. Please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. The app works flawlessly. It's, as you may know, we had parking issues in Montrose for quite some times. So with the help of City, we were able to implement this parking pay-by-phone app in there. I guess the company that you've contracted did a great job because everybody immediately adopted it, and then they had no problem using the app, and most of our parking issues were solved because of that. Most of our visitors actually used to go to the stores and asking for quarters, and by the time they were coming out, they were getting tickets, and it was very much chaotic. This app basically solved 95% of our issues. Some of it is that they're not very familiar with it, but it's extremely intuitive, very easy to use, and we're very happy with the outcome of that app. So I don't know, if you want to implement it throughout City of Glendale, it's one of the best apps that I've ever seen for quite some times. It's extremely easy to use and very intuitive.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asatrian, any questions?
I have a question for staff, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. These only apply to city-owned, correct? Any of the city-owned lots and parking, not the ones that we lease out?
Councilmember Asatrian, yes, this doesn't work for private lots, but this is for all public parking.
So this is kind of reminding me, I don't know what the private lots are doing, but I know I've raised this several times now, but I think perhaps talking to those that own lots that aren't ours but are in our city, to also look at implementing something similar. I brought this up, especially with parking structures that have the gate and no longer an attendant, and how it impacts people with disabilities who are unable to park in those lots because, you know, they can't extend their hand out or whatever it may be. This is a great solution to be able to make sure that those lots are also available for people with disabilities. So I don't know if it's possible for us to reach out to some of the lots, lot owners that aren't ours, and talk about the success for this, and see how they can help use something similar to implement for their lots.
We can continue publicizing it, you know, on our websites and making sure that everybody is aware of it. The, we'll make it available as far as the information, and for those private lot owners that we certainly are familiar with, however, we're not capable to reach out to every single one that's in the city, but we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Nothing?
I just have one more.
Oh, you have one more question?
Please. So again, I want to thank staff for implementing this. I think it was long overdue, and I'm glad we finally did it. Now, there was, part of the delay was that initially, you know, we looked at technology that most people were asking for, which is taking a photo of what's a QR code or an image, and we moved away from that for a very interesting and practical reason. Would you mind explaining that to our attendees, our viewers in the council?
Sure. So the, we had to go, well, to implement this, we had to go through a couple of different phases. First, we had to do a license plate recognition. We had to make sure that that was implemented first, and then we went to this pay-by-phone application. Now, that eliminated a lot of the issues with the having to paint the space number on each or stall number. So right now, essentially, you just input your license plate number in the app, and it, basically, you're done. We do have the, for some of the older meters that we have, that we couldn't go through that transition, we do still have that QR code that they can take a picture of and still use that, but we're phasing out, as you mentioned, those over the next, you know, few years.
Okay. And for those who may not be aware, one of the challenges is apparently some very entrepreneurial criminals have replicated the QR code, and when you scan it, you are not paying into the parking app, but you're actually paying into someone else's account. So in the era of scams, folks, just be careful. I know it's one more app to download, but the one advantage we have over, let's say, the Pasadena's and other cities who only have the digital apps to pay for parking spaces, we do realize that some residents still use coins, some may not have smartphones, so at least with this system, people are able to get the best of both worlds, either pay by coin or pay by the app. So I thank you for that, and I'm glad that we finally did this. That is all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, you say, so now we're live across the city, and is that all of our meters, or are there some meters that still don't have the service connected to them?
Mr. Mayor, all of our meters are live now as of September 30.
All of our meters are live. And the ones that took coins and credit cards, they'll still take coins and credit cards. None of them changed. We haven't swapped out the equipment.
Absolutely.
Right, right. And, okay, yeah, I have no other questions. Do we have any members of the public that have questions, have comments? Yes, did you fill out a card? Well, you could come up and speak first. Just make sure you fill out a card afterwards, please. And this is Ares Anonian.
I just had a quick question because I complained about this like two years ago, but I went to get coffee at Ideology two days ago, and they didn't have it there. And that, those are the meters that only have coins, which no one that I personally know carries. Are those stickers there on those meters?
Yes, so as I mentioned, this just went live citywide on September 30, and all of those should have it by now.
Okay. Just make sure you fill out a card so we have a record of your comment. Do we have any other, do we have public comments? Madam City Clerk? No? Okay. All right, I think it's, I want to thank staff for this. It's a great upgrade we've been waiting for. I like especially the ability then to add time when you're away, right? I think that's a great feature because how many times have we been in a restaurant or something, and it's like, you know, uh-oh, I'm running out of time? Or you forget, you know? But this will send a message to your phone, or it'll give you like a text message, it'll remind you to add more, and then you can just go in and add more time. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, that's a beautiful feature. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay. And what's our next topic?
Our next item is organics waste recycling program.
Okay, do you want to?
Sure.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Bronman, members of City Council, this next topic or item is also from Public Works related to the state-mandated organics waste recycling program. There's been a lot of conversation around this topic. Just want to mention for those folks who want to see a graphical explanation of what goes into which one of the three bins, Mr. Imrani has brought three sets of flyers that are on the table in the back. You're welcome to take those for your information. With that, Mr. Imrani will make this presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this is a brief overview of our organics overall overview program and recycling. So as we know, organic waste is one of the largest waste streams in California. We throw away about 6 million tons of food waste annually. One in five Californians are food insecure, and of course, organic waste produces methane, which is a super pollutant. So for all of these reasons, State of California adopted SB 1383 a couple of years ago. The goals were to, the goals were to, several-fold actually, was to divert the organic waste from the landfill, to recover edible foods by working with food service establishments, and also providing organics collection service to the community. So we have been working with our commercial franchise haulers as well as with our residential in instituting these, and we're really going through the education process right now. So this is the, a snapshot of our website, Glendale's Organic Waste Recycling. As you can see, we show three different carts, the blue cart, which is for recycling, the green cart, which is not only for your yard trimmings but also for your organic waste, and the black cart, which is for trash. And in addition, we also have instituted a one-pass program. So whereas before you had the same trash truck, go pick up your trash, go to the landfill, come back, now we've instituted a one-pass so that we have one truck dedicated to each waste stream that went into effect recently. In addition, we have a, SB 1383 has a compost requirement, and we've done several compost giveaways so far with our partners, our commercial franchise partners. The next one, which we have a flyer at the door, is October 7, so only in a few days, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and it's at Lot 30, parking lot, which is close to here, 1255 North Verdugo Road. So it's going to be self-serve, and bring your container and your gloves, and then you can just pick up as much compost as you would like. So in terms of source separation, again, we have this information on our website, handout, we've put it on social media, and as Mr. Galanian mentioned earlier, we also have several different posters, if you will, that show, for example, what goes into the trash, what goes into the recyclable container, and also what goes into the green container as far as food and compostable food. And again, these are available at the door as well. We also have introduced a new app, which again, went live, so we're in the pilot stage of testing it called Recycle Coach, which once you go in, once you download it and you register, you can go in there and basically ask it questions in terms of, you know, what goes where essentially. So, and again, we're in the pilot phase, and we are very much interested in the feedback of the community in terms of how well this app works. Since the inception of SB 1383 and the implementation of the program as far as the organic program, we are, these are some of the graphs that show our compliance, and as you can see, on the multifamily organics, we're doing pretty good. These show the level of compliance by our four haulers, Athens, NASA, Southland and Waste Resources, and for both multifamily and commercial. So we still got some ways to go, but we're doing pretty good. And again, it takes a lot of education, a lot of working with the apartment owners and apartment residents, as well as the commercial entities, to make sure that everybody has a good understanding of what this program is all about. And that is the end of my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let me start at this end and go around. Councilmember Najarian?
No.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Asatrian, I know has a question.
The graph on the franchise compliance, the 800 or 900 or whatever, the numbers on the slide, what are they for? That's the number of multifamily?
Those are the tonnage that we're collecting, basically.
So do we have a sense of like percentage that are in compliance?
I don't have the exact number, but looking at these, we are in the 90-plus percent, and we're shooting for obviously 100%, but we're in the 90, low 90 to mid 90s. Depending on the multifamily, we're a little bit higher. On the commercial, a little bit lower, but again, if you look at the graph, if we combine all of them together, these are by different haulers. If we combine all of them together, those are the numbers I'm mentioning, it's like 90%.
Before you move on, I actually also have questions on that. Can I pick it up?
Sure.
We can tag team on this topic.
All right, yeah, because...
Yeah, because I had a question. What does compliance mean in this instance? Because I know that a lot of people are not sorting, and it's not getting picked up, so what does that actually mean, that they're compliant?
So compliance depends on basically not mixing the loads, and it also depends on the audits that the haulers do at the time that they pick up the loads. So it's a measure of if everything is ending up where it's supposed to be, then, you know, that's recorded as compliance. If there is a lot of mixing of the loads, then we mark that down, or they mark it down as being non-compliant, basically. So for example, if people are putting their food waste in the trash, or they're putting it in the recycle bin, then that counts as non-compliance.
Who's doing this audit? Is it a third party? I mean, I just can't imagine, I hate to say it, I can't imagine that Athens is nearly 100%. I mean, not 100% of Athens' customers are sorting all their organic waste, I'm sure.
Sure, and that's a good point, Mr. Mayor. This is basically by the drivers of these companies as they're picking up the load. They are basically looking, and as they're dumping, kind of like what we were doing when the city was doing the service, they're looking at what's coming in, and if they can identify if there is anything that's not supposed to be there, they stop, they tag the cart, and then they notify the individual apartment, multifamily, or the business. However, you can't catch it all the time, as you mentioned, so sometimes you dump the load, and they end up where they're not supposed to be. So this is what, based on the inspection of the drivers as they're picking up the loads.
So, yeah, so they're self-certifying. Are we doing, are we going to do an, or have somebody do an independent audit? Because I think we're giving ourselves a false sense of accomplishment here when we show these kinds of numbers.
Yes, so in addition to the drivers, there's also audits, walk audits, that is done by the companies themselves, and we are also talking about, you know, doing an independent audit as well. But again, there is, it's not just the drivers, but also by the independent, by the, not independent, but by the company that has its own inspectors that go on routes behind the drivers and then check these out also.
Okay, well, for what it's worth, I would love to see us get an independent audit, and I'll turn it back to Councilmember Asatrian.
I am having a very hard time with these numbers. I've said this time and again during meetings. I live in a multifamily. My building has 50 units. Everyone uses a trash chute. I don't even think that most of the residents in my building know that the trash cans have changed because they're down in a locked place in a building. I, you know, I don't know how these companies are assessing this, but I think if we wanted to get a report, I think the report needs to indicate what percentage of multifamily buildings, not based off of the tons of organics that are coming in. So it may be that maybe the newer buildings have a different infrastructure which allows people to put them, but, you know, I'm being really honest in, I can't imagine someone from the third floor, I'm just thinking about my building, I can't imagine someone from the third floor walking around that entire property with trash to go and find the trash bins and then put it there. It just, I, so I would love for us to have a little more details on percentage of, and I have asked our HOA, because I've never gotten anything, so I've asked our HOA about like, you know, who's supposed to pass on the information for the organics and the recycling to the owners, because I've never gotten it. I've checked with my neighbors, no one's gotten it. So there has to be like some better communication between the haulers and the property managers, and sometimes they're HOAs, and sometimes they're actual property managers. And so I would love to get an updated report on this, but with a little more like where we are percentage-wise versus tons, because I don't know what tons means for us as a city, right?
Yeah, and to just piggyback on that, I think, you know, I would also like to know, like an audit, like maybe we do, they do kind of a spot check, right? And they give us, they can estimate what percentage of the organic waste that's being produced by residents and businesses is actually getting into compost facilities and not into the landfill. I don't know how you do that, but I would think we need to know. And aren't there penalties that kick in? What happens? What's the, what's the situation with penalties? Who gets penalized? When? How much?
So the, if there's mixing of the load, then they're tagged and basically notified about, they get a warning, basically, and if they continue to mix the load, then they get penalized. But again, this is, as you mentioned, not every apartment complex is on board yet. However, again, keep in mind, this is the cumulative numbers, and the orange shades are the ones that are definitely not in compliance, but again, that's across the whole city. So, or at least for that quadrant that these, the haulers are operating. We certainly can provide, you know, more detailed numbers and get the detailed numbers, but again, this is still, we're in the second year of implementation of the SB 1383. We've got, we know we've got a long ways to go. The haulers know they've got a long ways to go, but overall, we're seeing a much, overall, again, being the key word, we're seeing a much better rate of compliance than initially we had thought, but, you know, we're still, we still have a long way to go.
If I may add one more, I know that the city has those green bins that we give out, but I think that maybe talking to some of these haulers as they're going through the multifamilies, and again, not necessarily that green one that we have, because I've made a point that, like, you have to have the counter space for that, and for us to be a little more creative for people that live in apartments of maybe putting it in that drawer that goes, you know, under the sink and so forth. But expecting folks to come and pick it up from the city, I don't think, it's kind of wishful thinking, you know, and it requires proactivity on their part, and so maybe talking to our haulers and figuring out, you know, as they're doing their routes, maybe something can be implemented for them to also pass out those organics containers, whatever they may look like. But keeping in mind that's for apartments.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You have one?
I'm done.
Councilmember Kasakian? Anything more on this? You're good? I do have a couple more things. On, you know, there's still a lot of confusion on what can, what plastics can and cannot be recycled, right? I still, I mean, as much as I think about this, and I'm here, you know, on the City Council, I still can't figure it out. And I know that, I think it was Burbank... And I know that, I think it was Burbank had a website, we talked about this a couple times, called Where Does It Go? Or Where Do I Put It? Or something like that, where it had like pictures of all these different things. It was maybe interactive, I don't know. How do we help people know what goes into the regular trash bin, and what goes into recycle? Because it's in our interest to have stuff, right? Isn't it, like, if stuff that needs to get recycled, no, the other way around, if things that can't get recycled, if people are so-called wishcycling and just throwing anything that looks plastic into the recycling, doesn't that end up costing us? Isn't there some cost for the facility to kind of sort those items out? Maybe you can clarify that.
Sure. So, the first thing is, we do have a very dynamic, I would say, website, Glendale CA Recycles, that we've put a lot of information about what goes where on that website. We're constantly updating it. And as I mentioned, there's also the, this app that we've debuted just a couple weeks ago, which is Recycle Coach app, and that also, we're hoping that's going to make it easier for people to be able to just download it and, you know, check what goes where. But in addition to that, ultimately, anything that, anything that goes in the wrong bin, then it has to be sorted, and at the sorting facilities, basically, and then if it's in the wrong place, then it ends up in the trash, which is not what we want. So, in terms of identifying what goes where, I would encourage everyone to either visit the website, Glendale CA Recycles, or download the app, or if they have any questions, just to contact us at the Integrated Waste Management Office, and we'll be able to work with them on that.
Okay. It still is a little bit of a mystery, but maybe this app, I don't know, you know, I'd like, I'd be interested in seeing this app, and, you know, nowadays, Google has all this technology where you could take a picture of something, and it tells you what it is, or you can, like, listen to a bird sound, you know, outside, it'll tell you what bird it is. It would be good if there's, I don't know, if there's a function where you can, like, basically take a picture of something, and it'll tell you whether it goes in recycle or not. It's not that far-fetched.
No. We're constantly looking to update it, and this would be right up the alley of this...
That would be good. That would be good. Why do we put compost, why do we say we put compostable cups, plates, and cutlery in the regular trash? It says, it shows it on this, on, if you go back a couple slides, it has it there. You see the black bin there?
Compostable cups, plates, and...
Cutlery, it says, goes into the trash. Is that because they're fake compostable? They're marked compostable, but they're not really compostable, or?
That's mainly, you know, one of the elements, and of course, there is, you know, things such as we have a pizza box, is that, that's the popular question, do we put pizza box in the, because it has food in it, or had food in it at one point, do we put that into recycling? And, you know, we tell them, no, we can't put it in recycling, that's trash, essentially. It has to go into, you know, the trash, because that, once the cardboard gets, you know, polluted, basically, then there is no way to recycle that, so it's better to go in the trash.
Well, what I, that's different, what I understood is the pizza box, I know, if we're talking pizza boxes, we'll get specific, but you rip it in half, the top that's clean and dry can get recycled, the bottom is supposed to go into the compost, it's supposed to go to the green bin, because it can actually go to the compost facility. It's food, it's like food-soiled paper. That actually goes in the green bin. So, that's what we've said before. I'm pretty sure that's right.
Yes. It goes into the, it goes into the...
I don't know.
Yeah, it goes into the green bin.
It goes into the green bin. So, everybody, I just want to make...
Without the...
Yeah. The food-soiled part can go into the green bin and get composted. The clean part can go into recycle.
Yeah, I was talking about if somebody doesn't want to take the time, then, you know, obviously.
Well, yeah, we hope people will take the time. It only takes a second. Last question I have is about, and it's kind of a little bit off, but it has to do with the haulers, illegal dumping. You know, illegal dumping seems to have become more prevalent once the haulers started, you know, instituting this new program where, well, where we eliminated free bulk item pickup. What can you tell us about how that is working? Because there were a lot of complaints. I don't know if it's getting better. I don't know if we have any data that tell us trends on, you know, haulers picking up illegal stuff, people reporting it on the app, because we've asked people to report it on the My Glendale app. If they see something that's just being dumped, they can report it, and the haulers will come pick it up. Can you just give us some background on that?
Absolutely. It's, what we've seen, we do keep track of it on a monthly basis, not only for the items that we pick up, but also all for haulers. And it's trends seasonal, depends on, you know, I guess during the times that people move in and out of apartments, you know, we do see, and that could be spread throughout the whole year, of course. But what we've seen is that, because we worked very closely with the haulers, we've provided them with all of our hotspots, they've added new hotspots, and we are seeing a overall decrease in the tonnage that's being picked up, if you will. But again, it goes up and down depending on the, depending on the month. The main thing is, though, we have our own roving vehicle or trucks that go around to the hotspots and pick up these things, and the haulers also have their roving trucks that go to all the hotspots. So, we try to keep an eye on it and keep on top of it, but it's a problem that unfortunately exists in many, many medium to large cities.
Right. Well, okay. Do we have, oh, you want to...
I believe Andre had a comment he wanted to make.
Yeah. Do we have any cards that were put in?
We have one card.
We do have one card. Okay, let me do the card. Is that your card, Andre? No? Okay, we'll do the card, because this person did it the official way, and then if you could also fill out a card, I would appreciate it. We've got Makella Stone? Am I reading that right?
You mentioned that they, quote, will get penalized if there isn't proper sorting. Who is "they"? Is it the property manager, the resident, or this company?
Thank you for that question. In the case of the multifamily property, it would be the property owner that would get penalized, and then it depends on how the property manager, obviously, you know, distributes the fine.
Uh-huh. But isn't it, doesn't it kind of go down the chain? Like, doesn't CalRecycle will fine us, and we fine the hauler, and the hauler, can you, I'm not sure if it works that way.
Well, CalRecycle hasn't started their audit, but if they, once they do, then they, yes, we, they fine the city. And then the city, basically, looks at which quadrant, you know, these fines are concentrated in, so we would work with the hauler, and then the, you know, yeah, it goes down that way. It hasn't started yet, so for right now, we can't, we don't know, you know, the mixing comes from which unit in what apartment, and neither do the haulers. So, they, basically, will penalize the property owner.
Did that answer your question?
Yes. One more question. When will this begin? Last one, I promise.
So, again, this is, CalRecycle understands that this is a major element, so they're, they've given all the cities a little bit of a room to delay. It was supposed to start, actually, this year, but they've given a little bit more flexibility before starting to assess the penalties. However, the haulers are using that as an educational tool in terms of, you know, starting to, basically, hold the property owners accountable.
So, it starts, is there a start date, or it's still TBD?
Still TBD.
Okay. For penalties, not for the program?
For penalties, not for the program, yeah.
Okay. Andre or DeBegian?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I've been involved with trash for the past 15, 16 years at Montrose. And when the implementation came through that Athens is going to take over Montrose, what we noticed is that they just came by, went to every one of our businesses, and they said, okay, your trash process is going to quadruple, without any explanation or any of that stuff. With all due respect, I don't think the penalizing people would solve the issue. I think if you do create an incentive, that would be a better way of approaching our recycle problem. One of the things that we implemented in Montrose was that, when I saw the guys were going out, and they said, I'm going to charge you $500, I'm going to charge you $600, I called the guy, I said, wait a second, this is not how you approach. I said, you need to do, find out exactly what people are using. So, we start having daily meetings with Athens at our board meetings, and then it took us almost four months. So, we have created a protocol for them, because they were just going willy-nilly, and they were not doing anything. I mean, all the things that you're mentioning, compost goes one place, and I asked them, I said, how are you going to approach this to the merchants? And they said, oh, we have a training session. Never happened. That till today, none of our restaurants have been visited, none of our businesses have been visited to say what it is. So, I took it upon myself, and I said, listen, you need to go to the businesses individually, and I was calling them for each one of the businesses who were reaching out to us, I said, go over there and find out what their needs are. So, for example, a restaurant that doesn't use a recycle bin, a big one, maybe you can switch them to a smaller one, or the ones that they use more recycle bins, give them the bigger one. And they said, oh, yeah, the recycle bins are cheaper to operate. I said, you need to create an incentive for our merchants, so they can, you know, utilize that, be excited to say, okay, so I don't need this big one, because I don't generate this much trash, but I do use a lot of boxes, so I need more recycle bins. And by doing that, we noticed that the price of the fees that they were being charged from, let's say, before they were paying $120, and they were raising it up to $600, that eliminated that fee and brought it down to like $300, and they were happy about that, they didn't have to pay that. I went and checked every one of the merchants, and we talked, every one of our board directors, we looked into it, and we had the meeting, constant meeting with the owner of Athens, with the workers of Athens, and what we encountered is that some of them weren't responding to our merchants. So, I had to take it upon myself to call them directly, I said, so-and-so called, you didn't pick up, and so-and-so called, what happened with this compost? And then we noticed that some of the trashes were on the floor, because their employees basically don't lift the bags, and they leave it on the floor. We have crew that go over there and clean them up, but it's not our job. So, we start to keep on giving them ideas how to do. So, we created a protocol. I honestly think if the city of Glendale creates some sort of incentive for property managers, for the owners, for the merchants, saying that, oh, by you doing this, you might get a little bit of break on your fees and things like that, they will, you'll see a better cooperation, rather than trying to penalize it. Imposing the merchants, imposing people, it's not a good idea. So, I don't know, if you're trying to tell them, hey, just go on and punish them, they might get the idea. They won't. I still, till today, we, our relationship with Athens has, you know, we don't call them as much, because they know if they mess up, we're on their case. So, I'm just saying, talk to these people, let them create their training session, which they never implemented, so they need to have their training session, go to the restaurant saying what compost is, where you can put those things, and if you do this, we give you an incentive. You need to do that. The outreach is no good at all. And, I mean, this graph, to be honest with you, doesn't mean anything. You need to be able to educate people, and that's how you can get results. And if you don't do that, none of these things matters.
Yeah. And I think anecdotally, that's what we hear, and that's why I think we reacted to that graph.
Absolutely. And then I was laughing as you were mentioning, yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Satrian?
Not on this item, just one...
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, are we done with the, this particular agenda item?
No. I mean, I think we are now, unless anybody has any other questions. No. Okay.
Just a point of order. I want to, first of all, I know staff has done some outreach to the neighboring communities where we do these town halls, the city council in your neighborhood, but I notice that we have great attendance, which is phenomenal, better than the attendance we get at City Hall. I don't know how many of the individuals in our audience are here specifically to speak on issues that are listed on the agenda, but I'm sure that there are folks who also have come with their own concerns and things that may not have been agendized. I would like to ask for us to consider hearing public comments first. I think it would be appropriate for individuals who have taken time from their busy schedules to come here to join us, to perhaps be heard, and maybe there'll be some items that can be incorporated into our questions of staff afterwards. I don't know if it's something that you would entertain, but I'd like to ask us to consider that.
So, bringing in public comment now?
I think so. I mean, I'd just be curious, I'll have a show of hands of the people who are here who've come to perhaps address council?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Satrian, we, the city clerk has five cards.
For public comment?
So far, yeah.
For public comment? I mean, for oral communication? Normally, we would hold it at the end, we can move it if...
My only concern is if we go through these presentations, I appreciate that we have a captive audience, right? And part of it is us trying to get information out to the public, and I think that if we were to give them the opportunity to be heard, they would do us a favor for staying for the duration of the council meeting to hear the items that we want to bring up and share with the public as well. Because there are folks that, you know, may not be able to stick around until 8:30, 9:00, or however long the meeting goes.
Well, I don't, okay. I don't know that we'll go that long.
I'm okay with that. I don't have an objection.
Any objections?
I defer to the mayor.
Okay. I don't have any objection, it's...
We also have two public comments on an agenda item as well, so...
What's that?
We have two additional cards for one C, for item one C, so I don't know if you would like to take all of them?
Is one C our next item?
Yes.
Okay, let's do the next item, and then we can go to oral communication. How's that?
Okay.
Sure.
Our next item C is AB 645 Automated Speed Cameras.
Oh, yes.
Mayor Brotman, City Council, this next item is regarding the AB 645 Automated Speed Cameras. Glendale is, has been selected as one of the six cities for a five-year pilot program in California, state of California, and we have a tag team of Pastor Casanova, our principal traffic engineer, as well as Lieutenant Tigrant Topazikian, who both, or their departments both, have been involved in this pilot program, and Public Works in Traffic will take over once they're installed. With that, I'm not sure who's going to go first, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan, and Mayor Brotman, members of the city council. As Mr. Golanyan mentioned, Public Works will be teaming with the police department, and I will be calling, or referring to Lieutenant Topazikian during a couple of the slides. Speed is a major factor in traffic collisions that result in fatalities and injuries. AB 645, or titled Speed Safety System Pilot Program, is a five-year program that authorizes six cities in California to install automated speed enforcement systems. Glendale is one of those selected cities, and AB 645 is currently on the governor's desk awaiting signature. AB 645 was developed to address serious traffic safety challenges. Studies that, studies have shown that speeding increases the risk of crashes and severity of the injuries. Over 42,000 Americans lost their lives to collisions in 2020 alone, and millions were seriously injured. Statewide, studies have shown similar trends in California, including nearly 5,000 serious injuries and fatalities in the six pilot cities that were selected for the program. The National Transportation Safety Board reviewed 28 studies of automated speed enforcement systems in the U.S., Canada, Europe, Australia, and New Zealand, and the city of New York has installed hundreds of the automated systems. Studies of these systems have reported significant reduction of speeding incidents and crashes that caused these serious injuries and fatalities. Enforcement of speed laws are a critical factor in the reduction of collisions that result in injuries. One of the enforcement tools that are available includes automated speed enforcement. These systems offer high rates of speed violation detection, reduce speeding, and preventing the collisions before they occur, and these studies have proven that these systems reduce the speeding... And these studies have proven that these systems reduce the speeding again and the crashes. So at this point, I'll refer over to Lieutenant Topazikian. He's going to say a few words about the traditional enforcement versus the automated speed enforcement. Sorry. Grab that.
Good evening, everyone. The traditional law enforcement related to speed involves a human, involves a police officer making a traffic stop. It takes upwards of fifteen minutes of interaction with the driver, give or take a few minutes. It gives the opportunity to engage in the conversation, engage in dialogue, detect an odor of alcohol in their breath, see objective symptoms of maybe potential narcotics or drug use, and ultimately issue a citation to the driver. This new system is completely technology-based and will be issuing a citation to the registered owner of the vehicle, and not necessarily the person that is responsible for operating it. Pastor?
Thank you, Lieutenant. So this five-year pilot program for the six cities, really, it's named Speed Safety Systems, but it consists of automated enforcement systems. And these systems essentially detect a speeding vehicle using radar or laser technology and obtain a picture of the license plates and issue a violation to the speeding vehicles. The law requires that before this system goes into play, that there's a public information campaign at minimum thirty days before the program is implemented. Here are a couple of images of a typical automated speed enforcement system. It consists of a radar or laser device that detects the speeding vehicle, a camera to take the photo of the vehicle's license plate, and a process to issue either a warning during their warning period or violation notices to the registered owner of the vehicle. And now Lieutenant Topazikian will provide additional insight regarding the warning notices and violation descriptions and penalties.
Initially, the first sixty days will all be warning notices with this program. And it differs in that a police officer that makes that traffic stop has discretion on the spot, whether or not to issue the citation or not. This technology-based system issues citation based on the vehicle traveling at a particular speed. And in an upcoming slide, those speeds will be listed. There's no human discretion and there's no bias based on the technology. The police officer, you know, does have the ability to issue a citation or issue a warning at that time or do nothing. These camera systems will issue a citation one hundred percent of the time.
Thank you, Lieutenant. As Lieutenant Topazikian mentioned, there's a kind of violation categories depending on the speed, as we see from the slide. The system will only ticket vehicles that are traveling at eleven miles per hour or above over the speed limit. And as they're traveling, as they're detected traveling over that, that speed, then there's different categories. So eleven to fifteen miles per hour would be a fifty-dollar ticket, sixteen to twenty-five would be a hundred-dollar ticket, and upwards if you're driving at over a hundred miles per hour would be a five-hundred-dollar fine. This is a summary of the current status and the next steps. AB 645, and I have to note the typo there, I must have been thinking about AB 43, a different assembly bill, but AB 645 passed the Senate on September twelfth, the Assembly on September thirteenth, and is currently awaiting signature by the governor. The potential next steps, if the bill is signed by the governor into law, is that cities have to prepare a comprehensive speed safety system impact report and adopt a use policy. And these will establish essentially the program policies, the procedures, outline the cost, the ongoing cost, funding, stakeholder outreach, and as well as identify the locations where the systems would be installed. City of Glendale, based on the population, will be able to install up to nine systems at a time. And all of the other requirements, once the bill is signed into law, will be confirmed and the process better fine-tuned and understood. With that, that concludes the presentations and we'll be glad to take any questions.
Let me, we have two speakers and then I'll go for questions, how's that?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. I wanted to come and broach a subject from the past that could tie into our speed cameras that we're discussing tonight. I understand, and there's been voted on the road diet for La Crisena Avenue, which directly affects me and my business, which happens to be in Montrose. I also live on Shirley Jean Avenue, which is adjacent. Lately, I've had several merchants and people in my area approach me regarding this topic, and it definitely concerns me because I feel like if this moves forward, it could be detrimental and hard to back out of. I'm going to read the letter I did write to you a few months ago regarding this because it pretty much sums it up. I'm writing to comment on the proposed lane changes, the road diet on La Crisena. I live on Shirley Jean in La Crisena and I own a business in Montrose. This change would affect me directly and I have firsthand knowledge of the area proposed. I am concerned that the city has not done their due diligence and outreach, discovery, and research on the possible implications of such a huge change in infrastructure. Outreach to individual businesses has not been done. Folks that travel down La Crisena but may not live adjacent have not been contacted. Even local folks who have not had the opportunity to attend one of the many meetings that supposedly had occurred. I was unable to attend one of those meetings on the date that the Shirley Jean area was brought forth, and, but there was only one meeting to attend in that area. Montrose, La Crisena, and North Glendale does not have a gridded street system, and any changes to this area should carefully be considered. My concerns are traffic being diverted into, i.e. Spar Heights, which is this area that we're in right now. Going into neighborhoods, congestion, and wasted tax money and dollars if the plan does not go well. I understand the importance of slowing down traffic in our neighborhood, however, I feel like all avenues have not been exhausted. Reduce the speed limit, place a speed sign, place a ticketing officer, place a speed bump, do cameras. I understand the importance of slowing down traffic in our neighborhood, sorry, I already read that. I love the idea of people riding bikes. I ride my bike to work many times on occasion. I am not against the idea, I just feel that the city should do more outreach and research before this large change. It is important to notify businesses, they pay taxes, and any change in customers reaching their destination will affect them directly. I just feel like folks that are making the decisions that don't necessarily live in this area, they don't have to take their kids to school, to a grocery store, they don't have to leave in the morning with a destination in mind, and for one bike, there's thousands of cars. And I just feel like if we can reconsider this decision or look at the other options again, I think it's a necessity. And I'm hoping that the speed cameras could help in this area if it's truly about reducing the speed on La Crisena.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Your three minutes is up.
I know the subject is speed cameras, not the La Crisena, but on speed cameras, oh, I'm pointing to the wrong person. What are the locations that we think are most likely for us to be placing these cameras?
At this time, we don't have the specific locations, but there is criteria that's identified in the AB 645 legislation. A few items that I could probably refer to right now, as I, I'm ready for this. So there's streets that have shown a pattern of, for example, racing incidents, where police department has that documented. There's locations that, let me see, that have been identified as a safety corridor. But the important part is that the first requirement of this program, should it be signed into law, is to prepare a comprehensive speed safety system impact report that will outline all of the locations, why they've been selected, and assure equitability in the city as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's good. Our next speaker, Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, Councilmembers Tony Passarella, thirty-six-year resident of the city of Glendale. Twenty most dangerous cities, San Francisco, San Bernardino, as far as drivers. Berkeley, Los Angeles, Salinas, Pomona, Modesto, Lancaster, Anaheim, Moreno Valley, West Covina, Escondido, Ontario, Rialto, Sacramento, Fairfield, Downey, Santa Maria, Pasadena, Oakland, I didn't see Glendale on there. Futility rate, San Bernardino, Stockton, Pomona, Santa Ana, Visalia, Rialto, Fairfield, San Francisco, Escondido, San Jose, Salinas, Moreno Valley, Modesto, Bakersfield, Santa Clarita, Richmond, Alcohone, Hayward, and Huntington Beach. I didn't see Glendale on there. Okay, Consumer Affairs. Everybody knows Consumers Affairs, very respected, very highly rated online source for review. Worst drivers, that was California, now we're going national here. Worst, Memphis, Tennessee, Baton Rouge, Albuquerque, Macon, Georgia, St. Louis, Missouri, Cleveland, Ohio, Detroit, Michigan. Hesperia, Rockfield, Illinois. Safest drivers, safest cities, Green Bay, Wisconsin, Cary, North Carolina, Oxnard, California, Bellevue, Washington, McKinney, Texas, Lynn, Massachusetts, Glendale, California. Glendale, did you hear me? Everybody awake up there? Glendale, California, safest city nationally. And the London, the London, people in London are ripping these things down. There's like two thousand one hundred and eighty-four cameras up there, and they're, they call them blade runners. These guys are going out at night and they're ripping them down, they're saw-cutting them down, they're cutting the wires, and I think there's a bounty on some of these, somebody's paying some of these guys. So my question is this, Mayor Brotman, Mayor Brotman, you're not looking at me.
I'm listening.
Okay. Why Glendale? Why Glendale? It's not needed here. I just told you, safest, number seven in the country, we don't need any speed cameras here. People, this is a money grab and a control mechanism. If you don't, you're not going to like this and you're not going to like what's coming next. It's going to be far worse, trust me. Mayor Najarian, your sister rocks, by the way. Mara was awesome. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, good. Should we go to oral communication?
Sure.
Okay. And.
On this item?
Do we?
No. Just.
Are we closing?
Oh, there is, Mayor Brotman, there's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did you have, I'm sorry, I had a couple of comments. My apologies, I thought, I didn't.
But if, I don't, I mean, if you want.
No, 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 let's finish this item.
Thank you, and this is Laura Friedman's bill. It's a adjunct to her previous bill, which permitted speed limits to be lowered throughout the state based on the eighty-five percentile rule that we used to do. And nobody wants deaths or injuries by speeding. We do have to keep an eye on our civil liberties, however. I am concerned about, first, license plates. If a vehicle doesn't have a license plate, a ticket will not be forthcoming, is that correct? I presume it would be correct because there'd be no way to identify the vehicle other way.
That'd be correct.
Yeah, so I'm worried about people taking off their license plates and speeding, knowing that there's not going to be any, relatively few live police officers in the area where they've got the photograph speed cameras. So is that going to be a possible issue? The next thing is, you get, you know, you're at, you're at home, you hear the mailman pull up, go out to the mailbox, and you get a letter from the city of Glendale or the Superior Court, and there's a picture of your car being driven by someone else. And let's say you know who that someone else is, but you have to go to court or challenge this. And the first question that they will ask you in court is, well, if it's not you, and the judge will say, it's not you, but who is this? So you're in a dilemma at that point where you can't really lie to the court and say you don't know who it is. Let's say it's your son, not that this happened in real life, but you're in a dilemma at that point. If you're an attorney, you can say that there's attorney-client privilege and that you are, you cannot answer that question as to who that person is in the camera, but it creates, I think, a little bit of conflict. If you're not the person and someone else is, you've got to go to court, you've got to spend a day of your time getting that. Whereas if it was the old system, you know, the motor officer pulls up, the ticket is being written to the actual person who's driving. Now let's say that person who's driving does have an extenuating circumstance. It happens sometimes, we all hear stories about rushing to the hospital for some reason or there being an emergency. Many times, I think our officers, who are vested with the discretion in giving warnings or not writing tickets, will be gone with the photo speed camera in this situation. And I'm not so, I'm not so happy about that. The next question is going to be, how is calibration going to be proved? Is there going to be a, just on file, a calibration by camera twelve, that it was calibrated and approved? And how are they going to prove what the actual speed limit was in that stretch? Someone is going to have to testify, as they do in court, that, you know, I'm Officer Jones, I was parked on the side of the road, it is a thirty-five mile an hour zone, and I saw the suspect driving at fifty miles an hour based on my radar. Now I don't know how they're going to determine to the judge and give information to the judge what the speed limit was in that area. Maybe it's doable. Judges, however, are usually not keen on this sort of thing. In fact, the reason many jurisdictions went away from camera enforcement, whether it was stop sign or red light cameras, is because the judges felt that it was unfair, it did violate due process by not having a live person coming to testify, a live police officer. Now Laura Friedman said, well, that's all, that's all taken care of in the language of the law, and it might be, but these are just things that pop up. In addition, with a live, as you mentioned, with a live officer, you're not only determining if they're speeding, but you can determine if they're driving under the influence, you can determine if there's any warrants on them. And in fact, many of our stops, and you can testify to that, you can agree to that, have led, many of our traffic stops and speeding stops have led to the discovery of contraband and weapons and all that other stuff. I'm afraid that we're going to be losing that because we'll be redirecting our motor officers to other areas, and we won't have that excellent Glendale police officer on the scene finding out what all those things are. There may be a bench warrant, arrest warrant, no insurance, no registration, all these other things, whereas we're just taking the camera and we're just going to be happy with a speeding ticket for the vehicle owner. So those are just things that are the flip side of. So, those are just things that are the flip side of what is being touted as strict speed enforcement. And I know this is, you didn't make the law, we didn't make the law, our Assembly member did, the governor may or may not sign it, but some things that concern me are that, those list of items. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Want to respond to some of those?
Would you like me to, Mr. Najarian?
Yeah, whatever you, I mean, I was just sort of free-flowing, whatever you think deserves a response.
And I'll keep it very brief. With that, no, no front license plate or no license plates, there is a law on the books, 5200 of the California Vehicle Code, and our officers routinely enforce that section, camera or no camera. If officers see that type of situation, that law is enforced. So, in the rollout of this, if it happens and if it's approved by the policy, you know, level that it's going to happen, we would train our officers to, and communicate that license plate and laws. The enforcement of those laws are important to continue. As far as the actual issuing of the citation, I think we are trying to assimilate it, or in our minds, that it might be a traffic citation, like a motor officer issues, but it's more like a parking citation. You have a first-level review appeal with the agency that's going to be issuing the citation, and it's going to be Public Works. You have a second-level review opportunity with the next level up, and it might be the city attorney's office, just like our parking citations are. And you also have a third-level review with the LA Superior Court system, where you file a $25 filing fee and a judge reviews it. And so, this takes a picture of the license plate, and it's an administrative process, just like a parking citation is. And so, it doesn't create a point, it doesn't create Fifth Amendment, you know, right to self-incrimination issues, none of those things. There wouldn't be anybody being subpoenaed to say who was the driver of that car, because it's going to the registered owner, and then giving due process for the registered owner to have three opportunities to appeal, just like they do currently with a parking citation. And then, as far as the calibration, the physics and the science, you know, is there. Rate times times equals distance. And so, a vehicle will travel 1.466 feet per second, per mile per hour, and, you know, you do the math. Whatever the rate of travel was, whatever the distance was, how long it took there, it is a scientific fact that is undisputable with a mathematical, you know, equation. The calibration, our police officers are using the same laser and radar technology in the streets. Every five years, we send it to the manufacturer, they calibrate it, they certify it, that the speed it displays is, in fact, the speed that, you know, it's supposed to be displaying. So I would assume there's gonna be some mechanisms where they are calibrated, you know, for that. And you're right, the life stop does give you that personal, personal contact with that driver, but I assure you, in the city of Glendale, with our current staffing levels, in our Traffic Bureau, there's gonna be no shortage of work. We do receive many complaints from the community requesting police officers, and we can only put them in the locations as staffing permits, as the budget permits, and try to resolve, you know, some of the other issues with collaborating with Public Works and traffic engineering and getting the community involved. And so, you will always be getting your return on investment with the police officers that are out there, working in the Traffic Bureau and enforcing the traffic laws for the city.
Thank you. I think that covered a lot. Do you have any questions?
I think I have just one question. I obviously recognize that we have a speeding problem in Glendale. It's something I hear about, just as the case across the city, regardless of neighborhood. I would be interested to know about privacy issues. I think one of the things that kind of popped in my head when I saw this first was domestic violence victims, right? And I don't know who shares the car, I don't know, you know, who looks at the mail, I, you know, I don't know the structures of some families, right? But I think about, you know, what if there was an incident where somebody got caught on camera at a time they weren't supposed to be, and then that results in a family member knowing that they were at that location at that time? I don't know how that affects privacy rights. I recognize that it's only taking a photo of the back. It doesn't show who the person is, but the car is, car is there. And so, I think that's just one area that I have a concern with, with this. But I do recognize we have a speeding problem, and I don't think that this is replacing our officers, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Kasakian?
No.
Anything?
Thank you.
Okay, and I would just, I would just say, you know, speeding is a problem in our city. I don't care what any numbers say. Speeding is a problem. You ask most people, they'll tell you speeding is a problem. And the other thing is, this is a pilot program. It's done as a pilot because, you know, we wanna see how it works. So, apparently, it's five years, right? And if it doesn't work, it doesn't get, it doesn't get renewed. And there are a whole bunch of rules about where we place the cameras and the money, I think, the money all has to go into, like, does it all go into, like, driver enforcement and the speed enforcement and education and that kind of thing? I think there's something, so that it's not just a cash cow for the city. Is that right? Do you remember that?
I'm gonna invite Passarella, because the collection side would be through the Public Works side.
Okay.
Just like the parking citations are.
I think the, the law had, you know, was, was careful to make sure that cities aren't using this as a revenue source.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council, that, that is correct. The money first will pay for the program, and any money beyond paying for the operational costs of the program would go to traffic calming measures for the streets that they're deployed on.
Traffic calming measure?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
What about the replacement of the cameras? Like, when time comes, right? Like, I recognize we're doing a pilot now, but, you know, after some time, these cameras need to be replaced, so is that gonna come out of that budget, or we have to end up creating a new budget, or is that gonna be a different budget? Has that kind of been thought through?
Yes, Councilmember Asatrian, again, the, the violation fees or the citation monies would go to maintenance and replacing the cameras, but it is a five-year program, pilot program. There's gonna be extensive study before and after to show, you know, the benefits or the contrary. And so, it is possible that if the program does not proceed, that the cameras may not be, need to be replaced. However, again, the money from the citations will go to the operational costs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. And, and I forgot, I do have two other cards. So I have Rick, Rick Bachia, I don't know how to pronounce your name, Bachia?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bachia.
Bachia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council staff, members of the community. Rich Bachia, 36-year member of Spar Heights. Two questions on this. Other cities use cameras, some call them flock cameras. Do we see these being used to mitigate any other instances in town? And number two, will they be permanent located, or will they be flexible, moved on based on need? Two questions, don't expect an answer right now, but something to consider. And the comment about Locker Center Avenue, I know is not on the agenda, but my Spar Heights group is under the impression that project has been approved, is moving forward, and expect to see something happen in the spring. And if that has changed, I would appreciate the opportunity to meet with public staff about having that conversation with my community.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I don't believe that has changed. I think it is approved. You had two questions, we can answer them, if you would like. One of them was how these relate to flock cameras, am I, am I right?
Correct.
And the other one is, are they gonna be fixed locations, or are they gonna be movable? Mr. Casanova, can you answer those?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I would allow Lieutenant Topazikin to talk about the flock cameras, but in terms of the speed enforcement cameras, they can be both mobile as well as fixed. And there's descriptions in the Vehicle Code that, that describe when and how that can be used. Additionally, in that comprehensive report that I mentioned, that would be outlined on, on how they would be used.
So the laws, as it's, as it's written, would allow us to deploy them in one location and then perhaps move them somewhere else, as long as it's subject to the rules of where we can and can't place them. Is that right?
That, that is correct. If you move it, that additional location or the location you move it to, you would have to have the data to support it.
I see.
You have to look into that and identify it as a safety corridor, but if it, if it does meet the qualifications, sure, it could be mobile and moved to another location.
Got it. And how do they, how are they similar or different from flock cameras? Lieutenant?
At this point, it hasn't been the intent of the legislator to use them as an investigative tool, and so we work with legal to make sure that, you know, it's completely in compliance and under the authority of the laws it's been written. And as far as the locations, city of Glendale gets up to nine.
Up to nine locations.
Up to nine locations to decide where they're gonna place them.
Okay, so they're totally separate from flock cameras. Those provide information for investigative purposes, stolen cars and the like, right?
Correct.
And this data would be completely separate? The two don't talk to each other?
They do not, they do not run license plates for warrants or, or any of that sort. It shoots a, or laser, and it takes a photo.
Good, okay, thank you. And I think Andre Ordebegian, did you, on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, allowing me to make a comment on this one. I've been living in Glendale for 33 years, and about 10, 11 years ago, we have implemented a pilot program just like this, and they implemented throughout Glendale, and it didn't work. They took it down, and I did a little research, and I'm sure maybe Pastor Casanova can comment on it. They took it down because it wasn't cost-efficient, a lot of people, privacy issue, I'm gonna piggyback on Councilmember Asatrian and Councilmember Najarian on the privacy issues. That was one of the biggest issue, that they removed the cameras from city of Glendale, and it just didn't work. And as far as safety goes, we implemented two solar lighted stop signs in Montrose, one on Ocean View and the other one in Honolulu. It dramatically reduced traffic in our area. We were very worried that people could get hit, and those two signs that city of Glendale implemented there, we thank you very much for it. It changed the whole dynamic of Montrose. A lot of people are coming in here, and they don't notice. Those signs are on at all times, and I don't understand, instead of putting signs like this and investing in our officers, instead of paying something that it goes to the people who create those cameras, and they're not, they're, believe me, one of the biggest issue was that all the money that was generated from there did not go to education, did not go to traffic safety, did not go to enlightening people, and it went to those companies, and they finally scrapped them down, they put them down. So as Einstein said once before, the theory of insanity, if you do the same thing over and over again, and you're expecting a different result, then you're insane. I don't think that's a good thing to do. So we should look at it very closely to find out, how much would it cost to implement such a thing in Glendale? And is it really worth it? Instead of spending the money and investing, again, is it as an incentive in our officers, having more officers out there to stop people and know that city of Glendale is one of the best cities, and we have our best officers in here, let's invest in them instead of something like that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and it's precisely because of the problems with the red light cameras that this was designed completely differently. So this doesn't take a picture of the driver, as, as we heard, it's like a parking ticket. It's very, it's, it's structured very differently, specifically to avoid those problems. So, if you, if you look at the bill, you'll see it's, it's quite different. Okay. Any other comments, questions? No? Okay.
No other comments, public comments on this item, but if anyone wishes to make a public comment, please see Seda in the back. She's wearing a red blazer, and she has public comment cards, and she'll fill it, she'll help you fill it out, and you're able to make the...
Okay, so, and at the request of Councilmember Kasakian, we're gonna shift the order here. So we still have two more items, but we're gonna hold them until after general oral communication. So this is for anybody that wants to speak on any of the items that are not listed here, that we're not presenting on, they can do so now. And you do already have some cards, Madam Clerk? Can I have those?
Yes.
So we can get started with that.
We have, I think, six cards. You have six.
Okay, do I have them? No.
Oh, wait, oh.
I don't have them. Okay. So we'll start with Patrick Murphy. And this is our standard five-minute oral communication, is that right?
Yes.
Or is it...
Mr. Mayor, it's a special meeting, so you have a little bit of discretion here to...
Well, we'll, we'll stick with that. We'll stick with that.
Given that this is a different forum, and when someone needs to leave off of the dais, they can still hear us in the back, I would like to wait for Councilwoman Asatrian to come back before I speak.
Oh, okay. Did she just go to the bathroom?
Okay.
Okay, I'll put you, I'll put you later. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
How about Mary Lynn Fisher? Do you wanna wait for a full house? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, City Councilmembers. I believe Councilmember Asatrian said that she could still hear when she wasn't at the dais, so I'll go ahead.
Okay.
I'd like to talk about the issue of city council districts and an elected mayor, and urge you next week, when it comes before you, to vote for proposed map 120B. This map was developed by the city's consultant, who was a longtime Glendale resident, after reviewing maps that were submitted most of the way through the process. Its big advantage is that it allows, it follows the boundaries of the various homeowners and neighborhood associations, and that's its biggest strength. It doesn't divide neighborhoods. For instance, many of the maps I've seen, Mayor Brotman, divide Verdugo Woodlands into two different districts. I'd also like to see candidates for mayor be able to simultaneously run for that office and for the city council seat in the district where they live. An experienced and popular city council member should not be forced to give up her or his office before term limits apply in order to run for mayor. And more importantly, residents of her or his district should still be entitled to their choice of a council member. So my idea would work like this. A candidate will be allowed to run for mayor and city council simultaneously, assuming the terms coincide. If the candidate wins the mayor's office, then the second highest vote getter in that district gets the council seat. And that way, we honor the preferences of the residents of Glendale to the fullest extent. Finally, in deciding which districts are chosen to elect their council members first, a preference should be given to those districts that are vacant, meaning they do not currently have a resident on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know you've written to us, so we have your comments in writing. Is that right? Have you written to all of us?
Well, I'll make sure I do.
Yeah, please.
Good evening, I'll be brief. It has come to my attention by several of my community members at Adams Hill, that the trash increase in price will affect them. Many of them are seniors and living on a fixed income. They've asked me to approach the city council about the smaller trash bins that they've requested and are told are unavailable. What we would like to see is council inquiring into that and checking into making those available, especially for these seniors who are on a fixed income in our area, that have lived in the community for like 42 years, like I have, in their house, and they don't wanna stretch their limited resources any further than they are. Thank you.
Thank you. And the smaller bins are on, Mr. Emrani, are they not available? We've had a supply issue with those smaller bins, right? What's the current situation?
Mr. Mayor, the, we've standardized on 96 and 64-gallon carts that we have available. In order to go to a smaller cart size, we have to basically...
No, I think he means the 64. He means the 64. Wasn't there a situation where the 64s just weren't available?
Um...
Or am I mistaken?
We have restarted, if you're, are you talking about 64? Okay. We should be able to be getting some additional 64 gallons. We're in the process of ordering carts, so if that's the question, you can... Do they ask again at what time? They can contact our office or my office, and we'll follow up with them.
Thanks, okay.
Well, I, I do have a question on that. If we don't have the bins and someone's requesting them, are we somehow decreasing their cost? Because we can't provide them with the bins?
Not at this time. I mean, we have to have, the, the pricing is based on the carts that you have, because... I mean, we have to have, the, the pricing is based on the carts that you have because we can't determine how much trash they use on a, you know, on a regular basis, so.
But we have those smaller bins now, you're saying?
We're going to look into that. If the, if Dave, Mr. Meek has been told or the residents have been told that they're not available, I'll follow up with my staff and see what the supply issue is.
I mean, I, I do think that I'd like some sort of report back at least, if you want to send a memo to us about the bins. And if we are not able to provide them, then we should be providing people with a discounted rate if they were asking for it and we can't. I think maybe that's something that my colleagues and I could talk about, but I think this also reminds me that we were supposed to come up with a program that was supposed to help seniors with, with the cost. I know that's something Councilmember Kusakian and I had actually talked about when we were talking about the trash increases.
Okay, thank you. Ron Scott.
On a bit of a lighter note, Mayor Brotman, council members and city staff, my name is Ron Scott and I'm escorted by my lovely wife, lovely wife Melody. We are proud residents of Spar Heights for 28 years and I want to say that Spar Heights is fairly well represented here with some of my neighbors. First of all, I want to welcome you to Spar Heights. We want to thank you for coming up here. I'm not going to do a rabbit hole, but we are in a historic building. This building was the original real estate office for a gentleman named William Spar. So we won't go into all of that. My point is that Spar Heights in 2025 is going to have its centennial birthday. It's going to turn 100 years old. So there's thoughts being thrown around about actually throwing a Spar Heights birthday party in 2025. So I've been in touch with the Glendale Historical Society, the Glendale, or excuse me, the Crescenta Valley Historical Society, the Early Rotters Motors Hot Rodger Club and a dance troupe that specializes in ragtime dance. So it's, it's whiteboarded right now, it's just conceptual. The issue right now is that I don't have a checking account. So I'm looking into the possibility of forming a 501(c)(4) for Spar Heights so that I can create a checking account, so that I can raise a whole bunch of money. I just wanted to make you aware of, of the plans. Since you're here in Spar Heights, we wanted to let you know about that and that's all I have. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Scott, when you get that set up, let me know. I'll be your first check to donate.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
There you go.
My folks live down the street on Valverde Place. This is where I grew up while I was going to college at UCLA, as I would commute to Westwood and I'm very familiar with this neighborhood and how wonderful it is. It's good to be back.
Very sweet. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Stuart Biles.
Good evening, council. And again, I concur, I'm glad you came up here to our neck of the woods. It's a very, very satisfying to see that happen. I also want to concur with my, the gentle lady that came before me, that this traffic calming with La Crescenta Boulevard should be disapproved and leave it alone. It is just fine the way it is. All it needs is perhaps a stepped up speeding enforcement or else you might want to go down to look at Riverside Drive in Antwater. They have a couple of very good speed bumps that slow people down as I take that, as I take that route home. I am a building inspector with code enforcement in City of Los Angeles. I drive all over the city. I have seen the results of traffic calming and this rush to create new bike lanes everywhere where they really aren't needed. Some of the larger streets have been traffic calm, shall we say, and all it has been, all it has done is resulted in more congestion and very few usage of bike lanes. So I, I hardly think, since I live in La Crescenta, that somebody who lives up on Mark Ridge is going to, is going to coast down and do their shopping on their bike, on Foothill or down in Montrose and then make the ascent on our 32-degree slope everywhere that we have up here and do that. I hardly think that's going to, going to happen. What we see is the, like I say, the, the white plastic bollard disease on so many streets, especially in LA. And on the west side, Councilmember Mike Monin was summarily dismissed from his position because he put in traffic calming streets that ruined the businesses and, and the, the neighborhoods because the cars were ramping up their speeds through there. I grew up in Pasadena, I used to play in the Rose Bowl area and it was one of the most beautiful spots with these incredible stone walls. Now it too is just a white plastic bollard disease ridden stuff where you're confused and you have no idea what's going on. So once again, please be very careful what you, what you wish for. I have a feeling that a lot of bike lanes are being driven by agendas that really don't help us. They think they do, but they really don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One last thing, if I may, just make a plug. A lot of my Armenian friends are saying, Stuart, we need to have a three-day wine festival like they have in Yerevan. And I think because Glendale has its own vineyard and the great stone barn up at Duke Majin, what a grand idea that would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jordan Henry.
Thank you for taking my comments tonight. My name is Jordan Henry, resident of La Crescenta. Last year, as you know, I ran for city council primarily on quality of life issues and one of those issues was Grayson Power Plant. We are currently facing, the announcement came out yesterday via email, a nearly 40% rate hike in our utilities. When I ran, and I hate to be accurate in my predictions when it comes to these sort of things, I pointed out the fact that that would occur. Ellen Asatrian and Dan Brotman disagreed. They pursued that agenda. The second proposal for Grayson was already a compromise between your own interests in renewable energy and actual service of reliable energy with highly efficient engines to produce the electricity that our city desperately needs. That is no longer a compromise. We've reduced that to something like 58 megawatts. It is now part of an agenda that I fear will compromise our quality of life. That 40% rate increase that I indicated is actually an average across the city. Certain areas in the city, I'm not sure which, will experience higher rate increases. We as a community are facing inflation, obviously interest rates increases, the project that you're currently speculating is risky, there are inherent risks to it, we'll be paying more for it due to those same effects that we as individuals are experiencing. We'll be paying several millions of dollars more, and when I say several, I mean tens and tens of millions of dollars more due to the delays that city council has repeatedly placed upon this project. That could have originally been a revenue increasing project, but now we are working at a deficit and we, the residents, the taxpayers, the people you quote unquote serve, will be footing the bill. And I hate to make accurate predictions like this. I wish you would have listened to me at that point. Another issue that recently came up today is deeply disturbing. As you guys know, I've been very involved with Glendale Unified. Glendale Police Department put out a press release today stating that they have placed a man under arrest who was an eight-year employee of Glendale Unified, who has been accused of sexually molesting two students at John Muir Elementary School. And again, he had worked there for eight years. He had been a, his, his role at that time or for that duration was to have one-on-one interactions with these students for proper physical care, hygienal help. He had been taking these students to restrooms, we can assume, one-on-one. And we only now, as of today, have become aware of that revelation. I have pointed out certain actors in our community who many of you support publicly, who work in Glendale Unified directly, who produce pedophilic art. I showed you the art. I've received zero response from any one of you as an individual. The art showed explicit images of a child and he is working directly in our schools. I encourage you to distance yourselves from this individual. His name is Gray James, her name is Jennifer Heislip. Please understand that we need more transparency and accountability in our government institutions. This is desperate. This is our children. This is quality of life. This is the bottom line, dollars, safety, security, transparency. Please heed the caution of common sense individuals like myself in this community. I urge you. Thank you for coming to my neighborhood or nearby. I do hope you will take these words with sobriety and serious consideration as it is affecting the everyday quality of life of you and your neighbors and of children.
Thank you. Next speaker is Vartan Garpetian. And then I've got you, Patrick Murphy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Vartan Garpetian, longtime resident of Glendale. I live in Verdugo Woodlands, former mayor of Glendale. First, I'd like to start by expressing my disappointment, my anger and my sadness as to what happened in Armenia, in Artsakh, in the last few months. 120,000 people were moved out of their ancestral homes and land and no one did anything. No country came to our aid. Many countries that could have helped, they turned a blind eye. So when I reflect to what happened to my people, it changed my mindset as to how I look at things in life and how I approach things, even the things that I don't agree with. Tonight, I want to talk about the Verdugo Wash project, you know, how I feel about it, you know, what my position is on it. I think when we want to do very large projects like that in, in the city, the, if you want to compare that to other projects, we need to look at the projects that were done and are close to, to our city, like Santa Ana and Riverside. Santa Ana had huge, huge, huge security problem, drugs, prostitution. When they cleaned up the encampments from there, they recovered 1,100 stolen bicycles that they created a chop shop, they were cutting one from one end and putting it together with the other one in order to sell it. I think our community has the same issues and has the same concerns. That's safety, security, loss of privacy, lights, noise, parking problems and the construction of this, this would be the largest project in Glendale in the history of our city. 10 miles, almost 10 miles of elevated concrete platform inside the Verdugo Wash. Just imagine how long would that take to take place? And us neighbors who live, I live five, five houses away from the Verdugo Wash and we have to go through the quality of life? That's not a quality of life. We purchased our homes, when we purchased our homes, we didn't know this is coming. And we keep talking about the middle class, the working class, that they're trying to build generational wealth. This is one of them, that by doing this, it's not going to affect me, I don't think it's going to happen in my lifetime, but it will affect my children and my grandchildren. We have to, every, every, every project that we do, every, every motion that we make, everything that we move forward with, we need to look at the reasons for it. Are we trying to create green space? This is not a green space. Are you trying to create a place for people to get together and have concerts? This is not the place for it. If you want to create green space, do it in South Glendale. $6 million of study to spend on studying this, this project, it could be spent in a better location that's worthy of it, that it would be more effective. And grants are taxpayers' funds. It comes out of our taxes. It's not that state assembly has money and they gave it to us. These grants are basically our taxpayers' funds that has come back and is working against us. I think this whole thing started, I think, in a, in a wrong foot because there was a committee that was put together and none of the people who are affected by it were part of it. They had 12 groups that were members of this, this, this study group or what they call stakeholders or professional group. And one was city staff that they always have to be there. And from there on, there's five on that, there are organizations from outside the city, special interest groups, that their goal is to have bicycle paths and I, I'm not against that, but not in Verdugo Wash. I think by trying to force this thing in our neighborhoods, we really are affecting our quality of life. Lack of privacy and loss of property values. Again, I, I, again, I, the way I approach things has changed totally because of what happened to my people. And I think projects are affecting so many people. And when we consider the issues that we have here in this country, it's the greatest country in the world, and compare that to the issues that people are going through today on the other side of the Pacific, we have to be all grateful for living here and count our blessings every day. Because there is no other country like the United States of America that would give you a choice to have a voice and what's your opinion without being afraid of being prosecuted. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And Patrick Murphy.
Good evening, council members. My name is Patrick Murphy. I'm a resident of Sycamore Woods. I'm speaking on behalf of the Verdugo Wash Neighborhood Coalition and savethewash.com, representing over 800 residents, property owners and concerned citizens. We were surprised that two very important projects were not on this evening's agenda. The La Crescenta Avenue Rehabilitation Project and the Debris Basin as part of the Verdugo Wash Visioning and their impacts on the Spar Heights and surrounding neighborhoods such as Oakmont Woods. If anyone here this evening would like further information regarding these projects, I'll be sticking around for a little while. Another local issue which has potential much broader implications is a request from one resident over one year ago to open up the side roads from Sycamore and Cloud to CV Park, looking for safe passage to the park. This is extremely concerning to the coalition on many fronts. I need to remind this council regarding the fire that was started in September of '22 by a pedestrian on the exact side road that is being reviewed now. There is significant risk to wildlife along this corridor. We have recent photos of a bear family utilizing the wash as a passageway. There are many other forms of wildlife that use this corridor. First of all, there are sidewalks and signalized intersections providing safe passage from Cloud and Honolulu to the park, so the side roads are not needed. Also, there was no communication whatsoever with the Wash Coalition and savethewash.com regarding these activities. How is one resident able to mobilize staff the way it has been spending time on this item when there is already safe passage and over 800 coalition members know nothing about it? The LA County Flood Control District was also very involved. I spoke with Sarkis Oganesian, the city engineer, who was very helpful. I then submitted a public records request which had many files. Why is staff spending time and resources on this issue without action from the council itself, especially in light of the fact that this is part of the Verdugo Wash Visioning project? Is this an attempt at small bites at the larger apple or of hiding the ball from concerned citizens? We hope not. Needless to say, we were very surprised that this much attention was being paid to this item. One email in that public records request stated. One email in that public records request stated, "This may be a sensitive area for us to address, as that neighborhood may see this as our initiating the build-out of Verdugo Wash up there." Why is the city spending resources on this item, especially given that the California State Auditor, as recently as 2021, in its high-risk report ranked Glendale as the fifty-ninth worst city in the state out of four hundred and thirty cities, putting eighty-six percent of cities in better financial condition? One of the emails in the public records request stated that it would cost one hundred and ten thousand dollars per year to open and close the gates for this pathway. Moving on to the larger Verdugo Wash project, it has been close to one year since I met with Mayor Kasakian and staff on November thirtieth, 2022, to discuss the next steps with the Wash project. There has been absolutely no communication to the Wash Coalition from Community Development Department regarding items such as the request for proposals for further studies, the parameter document from the state related to the six million dollar grant, the formation of stakeholder advisory groups, and what is the status of the cost-benefit analysis. We were told there would be enhanced community outreach, yet we've heard nothing for almost one year. Mayor Brotman, at the November fifteenth, twenty-two hearing on the Wash, you mentioned that we need to get people out of their cars, and that is one of the reasons you voted to advance the studies, even taking the path further north than staff recommended. The Wash project is primarily a recreational path, so you will actually be putting more cars on the road versus taking them off. If someone is going to come to the path to get to an access point from, say, North Hollywood because they want to ride the nine miles, they're going to bring their car with their bicycle on it. So you just created two new trips. You're not eliminating trips. If you really want to remove people from their cars, I wonder how many electric buses can be purchased with the money that is going to be spent on this watch, which frankly is going to be in the billions. Let me reiterate that the Coalition and SaveTheWash.com are not opposed to the project where it is appropriate, such as from the confluence of the L.A. River and the Wash up to Brand and then stopping. The Coalition, however, is categorically opposed to it where it is not appropriate by putting wildlife and people at risk. It is the primary responsibility of government to protect the people pursuing this Wash project in areas where not appropriate is a failure of that responsibility.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other cards? No?
Mayor, I don't have any more cards.
Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for, for coming and speaking. We still have two more items to discuss, very interesting items. So with that, we'll move on to the next one.
Yes. Item D is sustainability initiatives, climate action and adaptation plan, leaf blower ban, and plastic waste regulations.
Okay. Mr. Galani?
Yeah. Mayor Brotman, my city council. Again, we have the tag team of David Jones and Elizabeth Harris of our sustainability office, who would share some of the initiatives and ordinances this council has put in place in regards to environmental effects.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to provide you updates on three sustainability initiatives. The Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, the polystyrene and single-use plastic regulations, and an update on the leaf blower ordinance. This will be a short presentation, and I'll be available for questions afterwards. So the first item we're going to talk about tonight is the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. The city of Glendale is developing the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, which will serve as a roadmap for the city to actively achieve carbon neutrality by 2045 or earlier. This cap will also demonstrate how Glendale will adapt and improve its resilience to both existing and future climate change impacts. The climate mitigation component of the cap will focus on reducing greenhouse gas emissions through fossil fuel reduction in buildings and vehicles. While the climate adaptation component of the cap will focus on moderating or avoiding harm from the effects of climate change. Whenever possible, the cap will identify strategies and actions that promote both adaptation and mitigation, such as building electrification with battery storage or expanding the urban forest canopy. The cap will aim to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by at least forty percent below nineteen ninety levels by 2030, as established by Senate Bill Thirty-two, and strive to achieve carbon neutrality by 2045 or sooner. To address climate mitigation, the cap process begins with the inventory of our greenhouse gas emissions in the community, which show where the emissions are being generated. I'm happy to say that the greenhouse gas inventory has been completed. In 2021, the inventory year, total greenhouse gas emissions in Glendale was one point two million metric tons, or approximately six tons per resident. The primary sources of these emissions are on-road transportation and building energy use. The greenhouse gas emissions inventory will help to establish greenhouse gas emission reduction targets, as well as policies and strategies to achieve these reductions. To address climate adaptation, the cap process begins with the development of a climate vulnerability assessment, which identified projected climate impacts in the community and the groups of people, physical assets, and services most vulnerable to these impacts. The key climate hazards facing the city of Glendale are extreme heat, drought, wildfire, flooding, landslides, and poor air quality. Those in our community who'd be most affected by these climate hazards are individuals of high outdoor exposure, under-resourced individuals, individuals facing societal barriers, and individuals of chronic health conditions. Based on the results of the vulnerability assessment, the city will develop strategies and policies to increase the community's resilience. Finally, funding and implementation measures will be developed for the cap. In addition, a reporting and monitoring plan will be developed to ensure the effectiveness of the plan. Ongoing monitoring and tracking will allow the city to keep the plan on track to reach the targets and state goals. We are now in the process of ramping up community outreach program to get feedback from residents on the adaptation and mitigation strategies. So far, we have hosted four focus group meetings in June and July with community-based organizations. We will be hosting four virtual workshops and ten in-person workshops, October through November. And additionally, we'll be holding nine pop-up events to go to different places in our community. All these events are open to the Glendale community. We've also established a mini-grant program for community-based organizations and nonprofit entities serving Glendale to support community engagement and the efforts for the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. All our events, dates, and times can be found on the cap website, glendaleca.gov/cap. For the future work, we're beginning to work on the preliminary adaptation and mitigation measures. This work will start with the Sustainability Commission this Thursday. We'll refine these measures over winter 2023 and 2024 with feedback from our community, and the draft plan will be available in spring 2024. That concludes my brief presentation on the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan I'm now looking to talk about our plastic waste regulations update. The city has established a foodware-on-request ordinance, where single-use further accessories are only provided to the customer if requested. Staff are now working on a polystyrene ban. They'll place a prohibition on the distribution and sale of polystyrene foodware, polystyrene coolers, packing materials, air cartons, produce trays, produce trays, and meat and fish trays. We're also in the process of getting feedback from the community, specifically the food and beverage providers, on plastic waste reduction regulations, which may place a prohibition on the use and distribution of single-use plastic straws, stereos, and utensils, establish disposable foodware recycling standards, establish a disposable cup charge, and establish reusable foodware for dining on premises. We have developed outreach materials around the theme of consider the environment, be plastic aware, and some of these materials are based in the back of the room. We have sent information to seven hundred and fifty food and beverage providers in Glendale on the proposed regulations and encouraging them to participate in an online survey. In June and July, we visited businesses in the Montrose Shopping District. In September, we hosted a webinar on the regulations, and we hosted an information session at the Glendale Gallery of Food Court. We are all also excited to announce that we're establishing an advisory group of food and beverage providers to provide feedback to staff during the development of the regulations. Then they can provide guidance on their food and beverage operations to help us develop regulations which are implementable and feasible within their business operations. We're also going to be working with Recreate. Recreate has been working with Integrated Waste Management and Public Works on their organics outreach program, and in that process, they are visiting a lot of food and beverage providers. So they'll help us by conducting in-person site visits to high-priority businesses, provide resources, work to educate the business owners and managers and staff about the plastic waste reduction policy, and develop product purchasing guidelines to support businesses with product swaps if the city chooses to implement such a policy. I'm glad to say we've had a number of resultant feedback from the survey that we have put out. The survey split into two responses, customers and businesses. For our customers, sixty-six percent want the city to reduce single-use plastics foodware. Eighty-six percent believe Glendale should prohibit single-use plastics foodware, and ninety-one percent feel that Glendale should prohibit styrofoam products. We also received a decent amount of feedback from the businesses. Fifty-seven percent agree that it's important to reduce polystyrene, single-use plastics, and landfills. However, seventy-eight percent are concerned with the cost of alternatives to plastics. Seventy-seven percent are concerned with the cost for reusable dining, such as dishwashing and staffing those operations. However, sixty percent do support a polystyrene ban, and seventy-one percent of businesses are already trying to reduce single-use plastics in some form. Once we have completed the outreach and received feedback from our food and beverage providers, we will develop the regulations and recommendations for city council to consider. And that concludes my update on our plastic waste reduction regulations. And then finally, city council passed gas-powered or leaf blowers, where gas-powered leaf blowers are prohibited to use. Enforcement regarding this ordinance starts in September of 2024. We are working on the process of rolling out an education campaign. We've just signed a contract with AGZA, the American Green Zone Alliance Association, who are professionals in this department and have contacts with all the industries. We're going to be putting on a number of webinars. We're going to be firing and speaking with businesses, and we're going to establish some demonstration events to show the different types of equipment, how it works. Additionally, rebates are available through the California Core Business Program and the South Coast Air Quality District, and also G W P, and we'll educate businesses and consumers on those rebates and how they may pursue them and get them. That concludes my updates on our three sustainability initiatives.
Thank you for that. Okay. Let's see. Councilmember Kasakian?
Mr. Jones, thank you for that. So for individuals who are looking for alternatives to some plastic products, who are looking for information on replacing a gas-powered leaf blower, what is the landing page or the information page on the city that folks can access for suggestions?
Thank you, Councilmember Kasakian. All that information is found on the sustainability webpage, which is on the front page of the cities. We look at the different departments to see Office of Sustainability, and all that information is found there.
Okay. Well, I, I hope that if there's any clever domain names that you can register that we can have access to early on, that can make it easier for people to find it, I would highly recommend it. And I think that it's important that we all do our part for a better, cleaner planet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Safran?
I just have a question on the rebate programs for the leaf blowers. Are any of those, are any of those programs instant rebate, or do they have to go through a process?
So for the California Core, it's at this point of purchase, so they would need to find a dealer, so who's registered with California Core. And there's on the website, California Core's website, they show where the dealers are, and they contact them, and they get the rebate at the point of purchase. And then for the Air District, they turn in their old machines, gas-powered machines, to dealers, and then they can then get a rebate for the purchase of electric equipment. And then the G W P one that we're offering for residents and businesses, that would be credit on their electricity bill.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I know there's a lot going on. I just want to say, appreciate the work on all these three fronts. And I don't have any particular questions because we talk about this a lot, so I think I know what's going on. But we do have one card. Again, Andre Ordebegian.
Thank you. Thank you too much of your time.
Talking about plastic cups.
Yes. As you know, Montrose Shopping Park Association is combined of one hundred and eighty businesses. Most of them are restaurants. And we have met with city staff regarding the styrofoams and plastics things, and they said that there's going to be a protocol. We're going to come by and speak with you and help you find alternatives to the ones that you're already using. Several of our business owners, restaurants owner, and one of our board members actually came to the city to address this issue, that they haven't received any kind of a data or any kind of an alternative. And on our last board meeting, we have met with staff that the city has implemented for this cause. And I personally asked, I said, "Have you contacted those people?" And they didn't have the answer for it. And I said, "Okay, can you please have the gentleman contact these two people?" We did give the names. We did give the phone numbers. And they were saying that they're trying to find alternatives, and there were none. So, and then I said, "Would you please have them contact us?" Until today, we haven't got that contact. So again, it goes back to implementation. We all talk about these things. On the paper, everything looks great, but in reality, none of these things are being, you know, implemented correctly. So I don't understand, if, if the city of Glendale is setting up this group to help the merchants, to help business owners, to help all this, why is it not happening? I mean, we come over here, we talk about it, spend time, do all that stuff, and nothing, nothing happens. Till today, we have not heard, "What are the alternatives? What are the costs?" And I specifically, entire board, asked them, "Can you give us some sides? Can you tell us what your findings are?" Nothing. And we don't even get a call back. So I kind of don't think this things, what you just heard, is accurate. So that's one thing. And as far as the gas-powered leaf blowers goes, I know the city of Glendale right now has so many electric power, battery-operated, which the batteries are all in the trash, and you guys are not using it. I know that firsthand. So I don't understand how does that transition is coming to fruition. If you guys are not doing the job correctly, if you're buying a leaf blower that only blows for five minutes, and that battery goes into the trash, where is the saving? How do we save the planet? Those batteries, you need to be able to recycle. We're not doing none of these things. We're just talking about something that is good, but in reality, nothing gets implemented correctly. So just my report from Montrose Shopping Park Association, hopefully you can address these things, but unfortunately, it's not going the right way. The same thing with so many other stuff that we're doing with the park. Again, we do a lot of study. We spend a lot of money, but doesn't go the right way. And we are here to save our planet. We are here to, you know, reduce our carbon footprints. And believe me, everybody at Montrose, we are very strong over there trying to do that, but it's not happening. Thank you. Again.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and just so, you know, I mean, the plastic thing obviously has not been even approved by city council yet. And once it is, there will be, I think, at least a year implementation period. So there's plenty of time for people to figure out how to comply. I, I don't think it's, this is the time yet. This is more of a time to study, you know, what the, what the implications are. And I think in anything we do, we will always have hardship provision. So if there's a particular vendor that has, you know, I, I think there's an ice cream, there's an ice cream shop, and they have a particular cup lid, you know, you're going to have an ice cream shop, and they have a particular cup lid, you know, you're going to have circumstances where we're going to have to make exceptions, and that's going to be part of our policy. So we're not, we're not going to be rigid about it. And on the leaf blowers, if you know about batteries and trash cans, you let me know, because we've recently purchased some very sophisticated equipment, and I would be extremely surprised if any of those batteries are going into a landfill. So I don't think that's happening. Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
No, no other public comments.
Okay. Then if there's nothing else from my colleagues, we'll move on to our last item of the evening.
Our last item, item E, is Glendale Water and Power incentive programs, energy efficiency programs, low-income programs, and transportation electrification programs.
Good evening, Mayor Broadman, members of council. I'm Aneta Batalian, Business Transformation Manager with Glendale Water and Power, and I'll be doing a brief presentation on our residential programs. The first program I'd like to speak about is the Early Replacement and Electrification HVAC Pilot. This is a program we'll be launching this year. It provides screening of existing HVAC systems to determine if system qualifies for early replacement, rebates for customers to install new energy star-rated HVAC systems, and the rebate amount will be higher when replacing an air conditioner gas furnace combination to an all-electric heat pump. The Smart Home Energy and Water Saving Rebates Program provides incentives to promote purchase of energy and water-saving appliances and devices. The marketplace, we have an online marketplace, energy and water efficiency, it provides discounted energy and water conservation measures to residential customers. The Home Energy Reports by O-Power, a lot of you are familiar with this, has been around for many years. It provides usage data and personalized insight on energy use. It also provides web access to electric usage information, high bill alerts, weekly energy updates, and solar update notifications. This is something we launched last year, where solar customers receive an email every two months explaining what they should expect as they go solar. Tree Power Free Shade Trees, this is available to single-family customers. They can receive up to three free shade trees and an arborist's guidance, helping them plant and maintain the trees. The Peak Savings Program is a demand-response program where customers can enroll their smart thermostats, if they own one, or they can purchase a new thermostat and enroll in the program and receive a $50 annual incentive for participation in peak events. We have several low-income programs. Glendale Care Bill Discount is a credit that is applied to the customer's account.
The slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a, it provides eligible low-income customers a monthly discount which amounts to $35 per bill, as we bill residential customers by monthly. The Helping Hand Program provides a one-time assistance of up to $150 to those who face a temporary emergency or hardship. The Glendale Reduced Energy at Home Program is a new program that we are looking into launching this year. It will provide low-income energy efficiency, it will provide direct installation of energy efficiency and water conservation measures in low-income households. Guardian is a monthly discount for household members using doctor prescribed, apologies, Guardian is a monthly bill discount for household members using doctor-prescribed medical equipment. Even though this is listed under low-income programs, it's available to all residential customers who have the need. The discount is based on the estimated electric consumption of the prescribed medical equipment. Utility User Tax Exemption, this is a tax that all Glendale residents pay. There are two ways to be exempt from this tax. Seniors 62 and over with a household income of $13,950 are exempt from all. UUT taxes on all of their utilities, including gas, telephone, and cable service. Low-income, disabled, 55 and over are exempted from this tax, only on the electric and water bill.
Mayor, may I jump in with a question?
Yes.
Thank you. For all these programs that we have, do we have statistics as to how many people we have taking advantage of them? And if we don't have them now, can we receive that information?
Of course, yes.
And also, in addition to that, I would be interested to know, because we do have statistical information in terms of what median income is, what household income is according to census figures, I'd also be interested to know, according to those figures and national standards applying to what is considered low-income, how many people are taking advantage of these programs, and how many people potentially could be taking advantage of these programs? Because there may be an issue in terms of how we're communicator, communicating our programs to individuals who would be eligible. Thank you, I would like to have that information in a future meeting.
That will be provided.
That's a great idea. Is, do you have more, or?
I do.
Yeah, okay. Please get to.
Moving on to the transportation electrification programs, we have a few. We have rebates for residential EV charging stations. You see the amounts, the rebate is higher for low-income Glendale Care customers, who are low-income customers, and there is an additional rebate if a panel upgrade is required in order to install the charger. Commercial and multifamily EV charger rebates.
Wrong slide. That's EV rebates, okay. No?
Oh, okay. I guess this is not the latest version. Okay, I just realized, I had made some changes. Okay, let me go to the, okay. Commercial and multifamily, it's on this slide, right? Correct. So rebates of up to $50,000 or 50% of project cost, and if special criteria are met, the rebate can be up to $75,000 or 75% of project cost, and most of Glendale meets that special criteria as a disadvantaged community. And web-based EV customer awareness platform, this is a great resource for those interested in purchasing EV, or those who have already purchased EV. There's educational material, used, new EV inventory, all incentives available to EV owners, and a map of public charging stations in Glendale. And off-peak, off-peak EV charging rebate program, this is where EV owners enroll to charge their car between 9:00 PM and 12:00 PM, so off-peak on weekdays and anytime on weekends, and there is a monthly incentive of $12 that they receive. The payment is made on an annual basis in June. E-bike rebates, this is a new program, $300 rebate to residential customers who purchase a new electrical bicycle. That rebate is $400 for low-income customers enrolled in Glendale Care. Electric car and bike guest drive event, again, this is a great opportunity for those interested in EV to come by and test drive electric cars and e-bikes with no sales pressure from dealerships. We estimate approximately 350 drives will occur per event. And these are the links, again, I had short links in the updated presentation of where these programs can be found, falling into these three categories.
Okay, that's.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Questions, Councilmember Kusakian?
Do we have an idea of how many EV charging stations we have in pipeline for the Montrose Shopping Park?
I don't have that offhand. Do you?
Good evening, council. Scott Nolan, Assistant General Manager, Power Management. Don't have that number right at the top of my head, we can find it and get it to you.
Okay. Well, in addition to getting it to us, if you could also get to the shopping park, because I know it's come up to me from a few of the merchants, and I'm sure some of the board members would be interested as well.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Questions?
Just to clarify, it might be simpler, these, I know these are the significantly large URLs, but essentially, if you go to www.glendale.ca.gov, and you can go to residential programs after that for the energy efficiency programs, go assistance programs for the low-income programs, or you can go to electric vehicles for the transportation electrification programs. Those are the much shorter versions.
The tax exemption for seniors and low-income and disabled, do they have to enroll in it, or is there a way that when they're getting electricity, we automatically enroll them in that?
When they apply for Glendale Care, that's another program they're evaluated for. So Glendale Care is the bill discount that most low-income customers apply for, and on the same application, they also indicate if they want to apply for the utility user tax exemption, and they're evaluated for that.
So I think my question.
Are you asking whether it can be done automatically?
For example, my grandma moves to Glendale and decides, she comes by Glendale Water and Power, doesn't sign up for Glendale Care, at the time of the application, is she provided an exemption, or when she opens the account, or does she have to apply for it?
She has to apply for it, because they have to be low-income in order to qualify. So they would have to be asked if they're low-income, and if so, then an application would be provided for them to complete and submit for the program.
Okay, and that process, like, staff goes through that process with everybody that opens up a line, asking them if they're low-income and so forth?
That I'm not sure about. I could check with customer service to see if that is part of the protocol, to ask seniors specifically, is that what you're?
Councilmember Sartre, and I believe Mark Young has a response to that.
Good evening. When a customer and a resident actually apply for service, our customer service representatives go over various opportunities for them to be able to benefit from any of these programs. So when they do do that, when they do sign up for it, they do get this one-on-one interaction with customer service to see if they qualify for any of these programs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian, no? Anybody, any members of the public?
No members of the public.
We have no comments.
Have submitted cards.
Okay, so it looks like we're at the end here.
Before we adjourn, I do want to address, going back to public comments, Mr. Murphy who came up, who brought up the issue of, I think, Sycamore Woods, I was mayor at the time when the individual had come to my coffee hours and had raised an issue about accessing a sidewalk. It was a young mother with a child, and I forwarded the email to staff. But I do think that there's valid points being brought up as to how staff has embarked on an exercise to look at things, and if the neighborhood hasn't been kept in the loop, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. So I would like to ask staff to communicate clearly as to what they're working on with the stakeholders in that area, because I don't know of any other scenario in the city where one individual's query will take precedence over the entire neighborhoods. When we want to, when residents want to have speed humps installed or traffic common measures wants installed in their neighborhoods, they have to go to their neighbors and collect signatures, right? There's a process to collect signatures, which incorporates everyone's input. So I would hope that in this case as well, whatever is being studied, whatever is being looked at, because of the concerns that have been raised by majority of those neighbors about what's happening in their neighborhoods, that we communicate clearly as to what we're doing, and that they're involved in anything that is done. And then lastly, I was talking to the city manager as a sidebar, he assured me that it will take some time, but we are going to hear back on that cost-benefit analysis, which I know one of my colleagues had brought up, and in regards to the Verdugo Wash. So hopefully, that's coming back, because I will tell you, as more time goes by, and when we just looked at the Fremont Park renovation project, and the costs being associated with it, the $6 million price tag for a study for the Verdugo Wash, just again, makes, it should make all of us scratch our heads, and hopefully, we can get a better accounting as to what exactly that's going to entail, and if those funds are not fully encumbered for that specific study and could be used for other projects, I mean, Fremont Park would be a great place to use some of those funds for the renovation, particularly at this time when we're seeing city budgets becoming leaner and leaner. So hopefully, we can have that discussion in the coming future, or near future, and I want to thank everyone who attended this, it was very well-attended, and I'm glad I was able to come out here and hear from the residents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and the same, thanks to everybody who came out. I guess we lost two-thirds of the crowd after a public comment, but a special thanks to everybody who stuck it out to the bitter end. So with that.
Motion to adjourn.
We, on what? But what?
Oh, on the electrical stuff?
Well, just, yeah, this is, if this were a regular council meeting, we'd probably be a little bit more strict with protocol, but we're going to be free.
Yeah, I mean, you, yeah, it was confusing, but I think he's gone now, but it's Daniel Jones, I believe. So I heard about their grant that he mentioned tonight, the Sustainability Office through Mike Borisov, who really encouraged me to apply for our org, Bridging the Borders, because I know there's a lot you guys are working on through sustainability in Glendale. And then he kept encouraging me, encouraging me, and then I just put it aside, and then I called the office a few weeks ago, and then Elizabeth, I think is her name, who was also really encouraging me, and practically making it seem like there was like a deficit of application. So then I went ahead and applied, and then I got like an immediate rejection with absolutely no explanation for why I was rejected. I had to basically harass the office, call, email multiple times, and then basically, I am just bringing that to your attention, because I feel like if you need people to partner with on sustainability, you probably shouldn't beg them and then drain their resources because they're a nonprofit, for them to then apply and then you to reject them without giving a proper explanation as to why. And I'll definitely follow up with this through email to all of you, and include Daniel Jones, but I think it's really a shame, especially because we're obviously not an organization that is strictly focused on sustainability at all, actually. We're an Armenian social justice nonprofit, but I've done a lot of sustainability work in the community. Back when I went to GCC over 10-plus years ago, I was president of the Environmental Club. We banned cigarette smoking on campus. I worked with Alec Bartrusev back then on Greener Glendale, trying to ban plastic bags. So it would have been nice to have a little partnership going, and I'm still open to that, but yeah, let's not waste your resources and our resources in order to get the sustainability thing going. Thanks.
What was it that you were asking for? What were you applying for?
I was encouraged by two different people in the Sustainability Department to apply for the grant for the CAAP, the Climate Action Whatever Plan.
Adaptation Plan, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not aware of this grant, but okay, you're going to send us an email.
Well, he mentioned it tonight as well, so yeah, I just, I mean, he's gone now, but I wanted to mention that anyway, so you get a heads up on the email. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, then I'll, I think it's time to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned at 8:30, it looks like 8:32.